Well, they had mock trial over the weekend, this weekend?
Yeah, I think it's time.
The weekend was, there was stuff running here yesterday and someone turned on all the loudspeakers in the back.
Got a minute or two.
All of them.
By our clock, you got it. It's time.
Wait. I talked to Ted.
We'd like to welcome everybody to the January 25th Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, we'll go to item one. We're going to recognize Becky Montana as the receipt of the 2010 United States EPA Environmental Justice Champion Award, and Supervisor Worley will be taking care of
Well, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, Becky. Thank you for joining us here this morning on this foggy day. This is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors involving the EPA award that Becky was recently awarded as the recipient of Environmental Justice Champion Award for her efforts to advocate at the local, state, and regional level for sustainable water solutions and better groundwater protection. Becky has been active in the Seville water issues, longtime resident of the community, and it's an honor for me to present her with this proclamation as we join the EPA in thanking her for her involvement in this particularly important issue for our local governments and for our community and people. So Becky, congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to have you.
You know, can we? (laughing).
Yeah, I want to thank the board on behalf of my community. It was a great pleasure being up there and Los Angeles receiving this award along with our governor, but it was a pleasure representing Tulare County. I just hope that we continue to recognize, you know, that we do have environmental issues, not just here in Tulare County, but throughout the state, and I encourage that we continue to be engaged in helping, you know, find long-term solutions as to helping communities. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. (applause). Okay, we'll move to item number two, recognizing the Tulare Union High School Girls' Water Polo Team on winning the Division III Valley Championship. Mr. Vanderpool?
All right, it's my privilege to be able to honor this athletic team and honor these girls from Tulare Union, so I'm going to go ahead and read a little bit of this proclamation. If they'd like to join me in the well, I'll read it down there. (pause) Girls, if you'd just come over here and just sort of make a line.
Face that. (laughing). Yeah, let us hide behind you.
All right, so I'd just like to read a few of the little whereas and wherefores on this proclamation to these girls. I shouldn't have my back to you, you know, I'm going to... Can I get the gate open? I'm going to come back here so I can read. Thank you. All right. This is a proclamation honoring the 2010 Girls' Water Polo Team at Tulare Union for winning the Central Section Division III Valley Championship. Division III consists of the California Interscholastic Federation Central Section of, and that contains Madera, Fresno, Kern, and Tulare Counties. The team won on November 17th. Is that a day that's going to live in infamy for you girls? All right, good deal. On November 17th, they beat Mount Whitney High School in the Central Section Championship Match. This is the first CIF Valley Championship title by the Tulare Union Girls' Water Polo Team. That's amazing. So, good job on that one. That's great.[354.12][354.12](applause). You ended the season with a 19-7 record, so, you know, I bet you wish you could have those seven back, but it doesn't matter, you're still the champions, so, and would like to really honor the coach, Tim Elick, for all of his efforts. I know it takes a lot of time and extra dedication to help these girls do what they do and to help the team be what it is, so we really appreciate you putting in that extra effort, and we can sure show that that effort is well worth it with the championship to show for it, so. And then, just lastly, we are honoring you today as the Board of Supervisors for the great efforts that you've made over this last year, and congratulations for winning the Valley Championship. So, at this time, we will take a photo, and I, you know, really, it's supposed to be a photo with me, but I think it's a photo with you, because you're really the champions, not me, so. And if you guys would like to say anything, please feel free to do so, and I'll give your coach a chance to do that. He's used to disposable for the team, but, you know, close for a little photo when you get right, try to get in the middle, as close as I can. Actually, I like to get in the middle. (laughing).
Short guys up front.
Yeah.
All right, Coach, if you'd like to say anything?
I'd just like to thank... Coach, me loud, I don't need a microphone, but I'd like to thank you guys for prolonging the celebration. This is a really big accomplishment, not just the first in the, for the Tulare Union, but the first for the city of Tulare. So, it, thank you for prolonging the celebration. You're the first stop, we have two more, so it's a lot of fun, and they deserve it. They worked hard all season. So, thank you guys again.
Thank you. (applause). Oh, well, thank you guys. Thank you so much. Have a great day. Thanks for coming in. Drive safely. Hey, we all do. And they're all younger than you.
Thank you for your attendance in today's meeting. It is truly a pleasure and an honor to hold the office as public servant and this year as the Chairman of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. It's been quite a year since we laid it last gathered to hear Supervisor Worley talk about the state of the county. Like all California counties, there were many challenges in 2010. The state dealt with its budget woes, and the economy continued to slump. Both obstacles created negative impacts, forcing most counties to lay off their furlough employees and reduce state mandated services, closed for growing budget gaps. Many counties struggled with these tough and innovative solutions. Other counties, like Tulare County, who has remained fiscally conservative for years, managed to keep the budget gap lower than most of our neighboring counties. I would like to publicly thank past Chairman Steve Worley, my fellow board members, other elected officials, our CAO and his staff, and County Tulare Department Heads and Employees for the collective efforts, contributions, and innovative ideas and leadership during 2010. Efforts from each stakeholder prevented deeper budget cuts. While times were tough, there were many county accomplishments in 2010. A few highlights include County Tulare's government continued to carry out strengthening the bottom line, a program which encouraged all employees to brainstorm cost savings and revenue generating ideas, along with ideas to improve work processes. Cost savings ideas included paperless newsletters and paperless playchecks, which saved the county thousands of dollars. Tulare County Water Commission obtained $2 million in funding from the California Department of Water Resources to address the drinking and wastewater needs for the disadvantaged communities in the Tulare Lake Basin. Tulare County Libraries received three USDA grants for the rehabilitation of Ivanhoe and Early Mart Library Branches and the establishment of a book machine in Cutler. These grants will continue to improve access to the public. The Sheriff's Department, 12 new community-based officers continue to serve the rural unincorporated communities. The community-based officers keep in constant touch with school officials, students, parents, business owners, town councils, community-based and nonprofit organizations, and others in the community to promote public safety. Staff has managed and continues to leverage Major R., a half-cent sales tax approved by voters in 2006, to boost transportation funds for the county by 400% and double the amount of road projects started in this fiscal three year, last first three years. This notable transportation project, which will start ahead of time and improve our Betty Drive, Barzley Avenue, and Carton Mill Avenue railroad crossings, improvements to State Route 190, and early completion of Mooney Boulevard's widening project in Visalia. County staff begins working on Central Valley's next broadband infrastructure project, which will provide high-speed internet service through 18 California counties, including Tulare County. This type of project is important for our counties who have residents in rural communities. There were many more noteworthy projects in 2010, and I would like to commend all county staff for their hard work and dedication through tough times. As Chairman, I'm looking forward to more innovation and quality projects from all departments and employees in the upcoming year. In 2011, I want to focus my work as Chairman in improving customer service, communication with the unincorporated communities and cities, supporting public safety at every level of county government, and updating the Tulare County Strategic Business Plan. One countywide initiative that I'm excited to highlight is our Customer Service Initiative. Prior to being elected as your fifth district supervisor, my decades-long career in the automobile business taught me many valuable business lessons. Those business lessons translate to public service. Customer service is the lifeblood of any successful business, including local government, and in the private sector, interaction with a customer is customer service. In Tulare County, our employees engage in customer service every day they work. From seeking birth certificates at the Clerks Division in Visalia, checking out books in Rosy, applying for permit in Porterville, are getting a road paved in Pixley. Thousands of residents utilize Tulare County services each year, and these residents expect and deserve great customer service. In 2011, the Board of Supervisors will partner with all county departments to strive for excellence in public service. How are we going to do this? Ongoing efforts have been made to provide all existing employees the opportunity to participate in customer service training over a one-to-two-year period. New employees will receive training at time of hire as well as follow-up training, and the training will be tailored to department needs so that it is relevant and useful for each employee. The program will also be offered throughout county locations so it is easily accessible and does not significantly impact the workload of our employees. For current employees, this training program should be a refresher course. For new hires, this should set the tone for the Tulare County and what Tulare County expects of its employees. Included in the program will be identified goals, which will be monitored at different points during the training to measure how well goals are being met and to make adjustments to the training as needed. I would like to commend HHS Director John Davis, County Librarian Brian Lewis, Ag Commissioner Marion Kinesita, Child Support Services Director Deborah Olivera, and County Administrative Officer Jean Rousseau for laying the groundwork for this important program. As leaders, the Board of Supervisors will match employees in providing excellent public service. Successful service initiatives include outreach programs that increase accessibility. I'm pleased to announce the Board of Supervisors Office, with the help of county departments, will implement three new outreach programs in 2011. The Tulare County Speakers Bureau will include a diverse group of local government experts who are prepared to speak on a wide range of topics relating to local government issues. Each supervisor is committed to conduct a town hall meeting in their district this year to improve community relations. We are the go-to guys in our unincorporated communities, particularly those who have no community or town councils. An online citizen's request form will provide Tulare County residents another way to communicate with county departments about an issue or needs that need to be resolved. Departments will receive the communication and respond in a timely manner to the request and to the issue. In addition to implementing three new outreach programs, Tulare County will continue to work with the community partners to promote 211. 211 is an important tool because it links residents to important services, promotes civic involvement, and serves as a social barometer for accessing where need is greatest in the community. All these outreach strategies are efforts to improve public service, as well as communication with our constituents, our key stakeholders. Another key stakeholders are incorporated cities and their elected officials. The Board of Supervisors must continue to work with city-elected officials to create a sound policy that will benefit all residents countywide. In 2011, working with our city-elected leaders will be an important step to the passage of the Tulare County General Plan Update this year. The General Plan Update provides a vision for the future of Tulare County. Having frank, meaningful discussions with city-elected leaders early in the year will ensure the general plan is current, consistent, and beneficial to all. The Tulare County Board of Supervisors expects the general plan to be passed this year. In addition to improved communication, I am pledging my full support to public safety. One of Sheriff Bill Whitman's key goals this year is to reduce gang violence in Tulare County by 5% by utilizing several strategies: implementing additional gang injunctions, establishing a target list of top 10 gang violence offenders, and increasing patrol in high-crime areas. The Board of Supervisors will continue to support any effort by Sheriff Bill Whitman to curb the negative impacts of gangs in our communities. One other item that must be achieved this year is updating the County's Strategic Business Plan. In 2006, the county adopted its strategic business plan for 2006 through 2011. This year, we'll update our plan in order to ensure continued alignment between community priorities and county services. County departments will identify their contributions to these priorities through department-level goals and as part of the annual budget process, which begins developing performance measures to communicate with the public and their level of goal achievement. In addition to countywide goals, there are a few goals and projects that I'm looking forward to in District 5. I will work with the Forest Service and residents in the foothill and mountain areas to encourage wide forest management, properly maintaining our forests and underbrush, will avoid catastrophic fires, and protect our watersheds. Talks have begun with school districts to bring local Step Up Gang Awareness forums to different neighborhoods in Porterville, and I will also continue the dialogue with the city of Porterville officials to host a Step Up event in Porterville. Our offer for assistance and support of the Step Up Porterville event remains strong. Planning for the construction of the South County Justice Center should begin this year. Whitman will provide economic boost to the Porterville area, and we will continue to work with the state to move the project along, and the county will research how to remodel the existing courthouse to accommodate court personnel, including district attorney, public defender, and other departments. Securing funding for Success Dam remediation project has been and will continue to be one of my top priorities. Next month, the Board will travel to Washington, DC to lobby for these funds, and I will remain active in every effort to bring the remediation of Success Dam. There's no doubt there will be more fiscal challenges in 2011, particularly with the state's budget crisis and steady decline in property tax revenues. The Board will continue to the philosophy of ministering state programs to the extent that they are funded. We have no desire to discontinue services to the residents of Tulare County, but we do not have the resources to act as a bank for the state of California. It is the state's responsibility to fund these programs, and with strong leadership, however, Tulare County will continue to stay fiscally conservative and provide critical county services. Again, I would like to thank and commend all the in county employees for their dedication and hard work, and thank you all in attendance, and may God bless.[1213.66][1213.66](applause). I think we'll take just about a five-minute recess, and then we'll continue on with the meeting.
(coughing) When you said they beat Mount Whitney, I thought... (inaudible) 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 Apparently, I'm going to be gatekeeper, other duties as assigned. (inaudible) 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 (laughing).
Okay, we're back in session. We'll go to public comment. I think we got a couple of people here that would like to say something. Tina, would you like to say a few words? Tina Terrell?
Good morning. Yes, thank you, Chairman Ennis. Just wanted to come and let the board know that I would be moving on to a new job in a couple of weeks. Forest service, we're in almost 44, 42 out of 50 states, and the premise of being a forest ranger or forest supervisor is that you take a job for a couple of years and you move on. And ever since I've been with the Forest Service in 1980s, I've loved that part because I get to see the country. The negative part of that is I have to leave the place that I have called home, and in particular for Tulare County and the community of Porterville and Visalia, I've called this place home for four years, and so that's the regretful part, is I have to leave a place that I've come to love. But the positive thing is I get to actually do what I love to do, which is working for the public in other areas. So, I just wanted to come and say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and Tulare County for allowing me to try and move the Sequoia National Forest and Giant Sequoia National Monument to that next pinnacle, that next tier of where it can be and should be. For the past four years, I've focused on trying to bridge a relationship between the communities of Porterville and Springville and Visalia and all of the small communities in and around the monument to showcase, one, the beautiful part that we get to manage for the public, which is the land, but also, two, is to invite the public to help us in that management process, whether it meant they get out there and pick up the trash, or they get out there and help us build trails, actually help us remodel some of our old lookouts. That has been the best part about this whole process. One of the most crowning achievements done over the past four years is helped to establish a new association that I'll be meeting with this afternoon, and the people, the public that actually has endorsed that association wants to get involved in showcasing this beautiful page to those who come to visit, and so that's one of the beautiful things that I love is basically connecting the public to their land. I love how Chairman Ennis talked about the state of the county and talked about forest management, in particular wildfires and clearing around the vegetation, and we still have to deal with that. We have a couple of projects that we'll start working on when the snow clears, hopefully in, I want to say, June. It's kind of nice to say, June last year was, that was still snow up there, that means we have a good snowpack, but it also means that we're not able to get up into the mountains to do some vegetation clearance, but we'll get working on those projects because the public is concerned about that, and as we all know, we live in an environment, not if but when, when it comes to fire. Last thing is that the monument plan is still identified to be accomplished, completed by the end of this year, the Giant Sequoia National Monument Plan. That was one of the biggest tasks I had to endeavor when I took this job, and even though I am leaving, it's more of, as my supervisor, the Regional Forester, stated to me last year, he said, Tina, we'll get it finished. You've taken it to that pinnacle, you've taken it to that next point, and we'll get it completed, so don't worry about that. So, that is in good hands, and I am sure that we'll get that completed, so that way we can identify the next 10 or 15 years, how the Giant Sequoia National Monument will be managed for the public. But I just wanted to come and say thank you to the board. You've been very open and willing to want to find out how the public can be involved in the process, as well as my vision for taking the Giant Sequoia National Monument and the Sequoia National Forest to the next level, and I just wanted to come and say thank you for all of your help and support.
Thank you, Tina.
Tina, I'd like to say thank you. I know how tedious the job is to get a monument plan put together, and all those meetings that you attended, and thank you very much to get this to the point that we hopefully can get a monument plan passed.
Thank you, sir.
We wish you well, Tina.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Justin Mendez, who is the field rep for Assemblyman Valadeo. Welcome.
Good morning, Board. I just wanted to come in today and introduce myself as the field staff here in the district. I know you guys have met with Assemblyman Valadeo earlier this month. He wants a very proactive staff that's out there listening, so we want a complete open door with all constituents. You know, we've made our introductions to other cities and counties, and, you know, now it's Tulare's turn, and we came to hear the state-of-the-county address as well, and my information is on that card. Our state government's so efficient that they don't have business cards for staff yet. So, all my information's there. If you ever need to get ahold of the office, my personal cellphone's on there. If there's anything we can work on, events that we need to be present, anything, possible legislation, anything, we're completely open to the county of Tulare, so thank you for letting me be here.
Okay, thank you, Justin, and I'll see that everybody gets these phone numbers and get ahold of me. Okay, let's move on to Board of Supervisor matters. Start with Mr. Vanderpool.
Okay, just wanted to mention one thing, and that was just to reiterate the congratulations to the Tulareans of the year. On Friday night, the Tulare Chamber of Commerce honored some outstanding citizens and businesses for their achievements and contributions to the city of Tulare. The Woman of the Year for 2010 was Mary Wedeman. Man of the Year was Tony DeRose. The Small Business of the Year was Hazel's Kitchen, and Land O' Lakes was the city of Tulare's Large Business of the Year. So, I just wanted to reiterate my congratulations to those companies and people for their outstanding contributions to the district that I love, so, that's all I had to say.
Supervisor Cox?
At this Friday at noon here at A and B in the overflow area, we will have a meeting of the Tulare County Gang Prevention Task Force. We're working on several things, looking at grants, looking at our next step up, youth summits, and the programming we'll be providing in the county this year for youth, and also by way of public information, the Step Up Service Learning applications for high schools are now available on the website. The last day to turn those in is February 25th, which is a Friday, at 5:00 PM, and those can be obtained by going to stepuptc.com. You know, it's been a very successful program with our high schools. We have, we received multiple applications for the junior highs this last month and are excited about continuing that program throughout the county.
Chairman, thank you. First, I would like to congratulate you on your address to us this morning and pledge my support for your initiatives this year. I know we all support you and what you want to accomplish on the Board of Supervisors, and these are challenging times, but also opportune times. Last Friday night was Chamber of Commerce Pinkwood for Cutler-Rosy Chamber, and want to congratulate the award winners. Woman of the Year was Yvette Patello. Man of the Year, Jose Trevino. And Business of the Year was Cutler Pharmacy. Cutler Pharmacy has been in existence for 42 years with one owner. It's probably one of the last independent pharmacies that I know of in my district. I think the Dineva has none, they've... hopefully learned something about realignment, and that is you can get hosed with realignment as county government. And so it's very important that when we look at realignment, that we look at flexibility in administration, funding that will be adequate to meet the needs of the programs that are being distributed, looking at being redistributed to the counties. And so CSAC is, I think, well-positioned and aware of these issues, and we will want to be engaged ourselves, because this is going to be very important for Tulare County, especially the size of our county with our large indigent population and the public health and mental health issues. One of the, just a kind of a little interesting point was that a supervisor from Sonoma County has been, made the point numerous times, have heard dissatisfaction with the fact that counties have laid off many, many employees, and Tulare County's no exception, and the state has laid off very few. And of course, the state sort of chose to do a fifteen percent reduction of salary through furloughs, which has had a lot of implications of people, in fact, the clerk of the board, one of the clerks apparently in Sacramento lost her home recently because of those circumstances. But they're talking about laying off as much as twenty-five percent state employees in this upcoming budget cycle. And the challenge for them is that I think over two-thirds of their employees are engaged in what we think of as like jail-type things, you know, whether they're at the state hospital or their prison systems and their twenty-four-hour care facilities. And you can't just lay people off, you know, twenty-five percent of the people and still run these facilities, so it's a real challenge for them. So I gave them a suggestion. I said, "Well, if you're going to treat the Williams-Matt contracts as local government contracts, there's really no reason why the state should receive early termination fees since they're not going to provide any subvention, and we're taking it in the shorts as far as reduction of property taxes, so when we have an opportunity to recover some of those funds through early termination fees, they should go back to the counties of origin." And the other thing is, why do we have a Department of Conservation? In other words, eliminate the Conservation Department completely. And she was the gal who was there, the Secretary of Finance was, you know, making notes and so forth, because they are looking at those kinds of strategic cuts. You can't just cut twenty-five percent across the board. It doesn't work, we know that. You have to look at different departments, and some, maybe we can get rid of departments and eliminate duplication of efforts and become more efficient and that sort of thing. But the challenge is going to be tremendous for the state of California, and of course, it'll be almost equally challenging for us because they're looking at us as being part of the solution, so that's my report.
Thank you, Tina.
Yesterday, we had a Water Commission meeting, and we had a joint meeting with the Tulare County Flood Commission. And the reason of the joint meeting was not just because of the floods we just experienced, it's the fact that we need to come up with a comprehensive water plan in Tulare County, which includes flood control. So that's why we had the joint meeting. It was a meeting to discuss the potential of the two commissions working together to come up with a comprehensive plan and to come up with, really, a flood plan also, projects, real projects that we can set goals to complete within the next several years. As a result of having the Tulare County Water Commission and with staff from the CAO's office, we've been able to bring in approximately, almost two and a half million dollars in grants for water issues. As a result of that success, this week, we will be hiring an analyst, a water analyst, which will be devoting the majority of the person's time just to water issues and looking for grants to improve water in Tulare County. So we expect that person to come on board within the next couple of weeks, and it's the only person I know in the county government that's been, that is going to be hired to be dedicated just to look at water solutions. So I think we've made a lot of progress there from our work in the last couple of years, and that's all I have. Oh, the Lindsay Chamber of Commerce is having their awards banquet this Saturday, and I look forward to attending that.
Thank you. Well, the new Porterville Fairgrounds had its first event two weeks ago, Scary Winter Classic. There were over two hundred people involved in this from out of the whole state of California, and it went off very well for a brand-new facility. Everybody liked the facility much better than our old Porterville Fairgrounds because the circulation was so much better. You could get in, unload your trailers with your animals, get out. The security was very good because we'd had, we'd had a roping there prior, and they left all the panels up, so when we put our cattle stalls and stuff in, if those rank steers and stuff get away, there was no place for them to go. So these first shows, the steers were a little skittish, and so were the animals and kids and everybody else. So it went off very well. Everybody was very, very happy with the new facility, and we're looking forward to many more events in that area. Okay, let's move to the consent calendar. Anybody want to remove any?
Chairman, I'd just like to remove Item 26 for separate consideration, just to call attention to a good story there.
Okay, and then Item Eight is, it was a clerical error, and that's why it's back on for this consent calendar. So other than that, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Sheena, second by Supervisor Wordley. Take a vote. It's unanimous? Okay, we'll go to Item Number 26.
Good morning, Board. Brett Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. The item before you this morning is a request for authorization to request bids for the Road 80 Phase Two project. This segment of Road 80 would build a four-lane divided facility from just south of El Monte Avenue or Avenue 416 in the city of Dinuba down to Avenue 384. This project was actually, was a request for allocation back in June before the CTC. However, as you're aware, the state doesn't seem to have funding for the transportation projects that is programmed over time, so this was kind of sitting there in limbo until the state approached us and said, "If you're willing to convert this project to a federally-funded project, we can get some money for you." So we took a look at that and said yes, since we'd already cleared the NEPA process, and it was just a few things we needed to do, although it took us six months to get them done. We've got all those steps completed, and we now have our authorization to proceed, and so we're here before you to get this project on the road and under construction. And with that, I'd respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Chairman, just, I just thank you, Brett, for that. I just think it's good to point out these projects, because these are, this is a major, major project for Tulare County. It's a great story about Measure C, uh, Measure R. Measure R, I'm thinking about Fresno County because they're looking at, working on Avenue 416. But, you know, I just think we need to call attention to these moments of celebration, really, this is a great milestone in moving this project forward. We have completed one, we are in the process of doing 1A, which has been challenging because of the floodwaters and the construction of bridges over the now swollen streams and rivers, but that project's moving forward, and this will be coming, this will start in Dinuba, if I'm not mistaken, Brett.
Correct, yes.
And go all the way down to 384.
384, 384.
And depending upon, as I understand, the funding, might even extend a little further south.
It'll stop at that location. Because of the federal money that's involved, it really limits our flexibility to do add-on alternates, so it's a fixed-limit project.
But that still is a major, a major part of this project, and again, it's just great to see things moving forward. In the world of negativity, it's always nice to highlight something which is positive, and this is very positive. Thank you, Brett, and I would move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, moved by Supervisor Wordley, second by Supervisor Cox. It's favored. It's unanimous?
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Chairman, we do want to know, is the row of palm trees staying or gone?
Those are staying.
Yeah. And I can respond to that real quickly. Going back over time, that was part, at one point, we looked at moving palm trees and piping an irrigation canal, and that added at the time about three or four million dollars to the project, so it was decided then to shift the project further to the east, and that's what this project will do, and there were some consequences. We had to buy a person's home and so forth, but overall, it was a net savings to the project.
It's a little easier, it's very difficult to move an irrigation canal. We've done a couple of those, and those are not easy projects because they're not our facilities, so we have to work with another, another entity. Just for the Board's information, we will be submitting our request to the CTC in March for the Phase Three project, which would close the gap between Avenue 384 and the St. John's River. However, what I'm hearing from Ted Smalley with TCAG is that it's very unlikely that the state's going to have money to fund that project, but what's important is that once we submit our request, that marks our point in line, and when funding does become available, then we may be in a better position to secure funding as well. In addition, if there's any federal money, because again, we were successfully converted Phase Two, we would look at converting Phase Three to federal funding if that was the only money that was available to build the project. Thank you, Board.
This conversation reminded me of a story about palm trees. If you look at Lindsey, Exeter, and some of those areas, you see all those palm trees around these, on these ranch farms. The reason those palm trees are there, if you bought so many orange trees, you got a free palm tree.
I remember that story.
So, a little trivia.
Well, thank you, Brett, and of course, anytime we improve roads throughout our county, it improves the circulation and it improves the quality of life for everybody, so thank you very much. That, that ends the meeting, but if we need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Items N and H are off agenda. I do anticipate an announcement.
Okay, thank you. This meeting's adjourned.
That's pretty good, Ann. This is your first meeting, it's fifteen minutes.
Announcement at a closed session today, January 25th, 2011, by Kathleen Dale Sign, County Council. In the matter of Item A, Chairs versus County of Tulare at All, the Board voted to provide a defense in that litigation and also to defend employee defendants with the reservation of rights. This was done on motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ashida on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.